To the, um, could start out by introducing ourselves, please. Start with Elizabeth.
Elizabeth Edwardsen, Associate Planner.
Kyle Kearns, Director of Community Development.
Lee Tao, Commission Member.
Jeff Baroots, Commission Member.
Ben Goodrill, Commission Member.
Matt Zachar, Mayor.
I'm Dennis Pollock, City Alderman.
All right, thank you. Uh, we also have on the phone Melissa Hernandez, who will be joining us for Item One, uh, when we get there. So, uh, Item One, Approval of the Report from August 5th, 2024 Planning Commission Meeting. What are your wishes?
I motion to approve them.
Second then.
And a motion by Jeff, second by Lee. Questions, comments? Seeing none, I move to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say nay. Ayes have it four to zero. Item two, two, four, dash, zero, zero, one, five, zero, four. David Zilke, Request for Special Exception for a Chain Link Trash Enclosure in a Commercial Zoning District at two, two, four, zero, A Street South, Parcel ID three, four, dash, one, two, one, three, nine. Elizabeth?
Thank you, Mayor. The request is for a special exception for a chain link trash enclosure um, in a commercial zoning district. The trash enclosure is proposed to be chain linked with black final slats. The property is currently zoned general commercial B two district. The property is currently being utilized as a vehicle repair shop and vehicle repair shops are conditional use in the B two district. Um, the planning commission can approve special exceptions for chain link trash enclosures when certain standards are met. And these standards are, um, the trash enclosure will be shielded from Eighth Street by the building. There is no rear yard for this property because the property has two frontages, so the trash enclosure would technically be in the side yard. Privacy slats are proposed to be installed. A landscaping plan has not been submitted. Staff recommend a shrub species be identified prior to approval. And based on the design submitted, it can be assumed that the gate is proposed to be metal with black privacy slats. Staff recommend that materials be identified prior to approval. So our recommendation is to approve with conditions. First condition being that landscaping in the form of shrubs shall completely screen the enclosure at maturity and be a minimum of fifty percent of the enclosure height at planting, except the enclosure gate. A landscaping plan shall be submitted for review and approval by the Community Development Department. The enclosure gate shall be one hundred percent opaque and made of wood, synthetic, or metal materials. An updated gate design shall be submitted for review and approval by the Community Development Department. And that minor modifications to the plan shall be permitted to be reviewed and approved by the Community Development Department.
Thank you. What are your wishes?
I have a question, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Kyle, how does this instance differ? Cause I know we talked at length about this with a different, um, applicant a little over a year ago. How does this differ and how is this similar to that instance? And are we doing something equally?
Yeah, so, um, I'll note that the applicant, Melissa, is on the Zoom meeting, um, so she can provide details specifically related to the request. But this is very similar to the other request, uh, from the coffee shop, um, in which they had to, uh, ultimately meet the same standards. Um, and we, we required, uh, similarly as the code requires in that case. Uh, there were a few things missing here, one of which was the, the landscaping. Um, so that's, that's required in the ordinance, so that's why we're requiring that, that, um, that be identified on a landscape plan. And then the gate also should be made of wood or synthetic materials rather than just chain link and privacy slats. This may be a little bit more unique or different because this is facing a little bit different direction. Um, this would be considered in the, in the rear. Um, facing the rear and, and some of it's shaded from the building. Um, if you go back to the, I think, do we have an aerial map of this one?
Well, it's in the corner on bottom.
Yeah. Um, but ultimately, we are, yeah, we're holding them to the same standard and requiring the same as the, the previous request.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that, given how this one is so similar, that we're being consistent, but thank you.
Other questions? Lee?
Okay, so looking at this and knowing this property, um, my only question is, the, um, plants. Now, would that requ- that would require them to, um, alter the parking lot in the back to accommodate for the, um, the landscaping, right? Because right now it's, it's all concrete or cement back there. So, in order for them to have this enclosure, it's a requirement for them to have landscaping? Am I understanding that?
That's correct. So this is a unique lot in that if you look at the aerial photo, uh, a hundred percent of it is impervious surface. So it's considered non-conforming. Our code only allows a maximum of eighty percent of this lot to be impervious surface. Um, obviously, our, we're enforcing a code that was written in twenty eighteen, so anything prior is grandfathered into that ordinance. Um, but they don't, they don't have any greenscape, green space or landscaping on the lot in its current form. Um, but you can see the white car there in the, kind of middle of the site, uh, closer to Seventh Street. That's the approximate location of where the trash enclosure is to be located. And, and you're correct that it's currently paved. There is no green space there at this point.
So they would have to tear up the parking lot just for the, to put in this enclosure for the, the disposal?
They, they would and, and, um, you know, Melissa again can provide more details.
Is that part of their, um, request or is that what we, we have to, um, have them do that?
That's what the code requires. They did not show that on the plan. Um, I'll note that, you know, with fencing, um, typically you're, you're gonna bury fence, fence posts too. Um, so tearing up the, the asphalt likely will happen due to the fencing. Um, Melissa might be able to comment as to whether or not they'll, they'll do a, uh, a concrete pad here or if they're, they're planning to use the existing asphalt.
Yes, hello, I, I'm-
Go ahead.
Yes, I, I'm sorry, I can't, I can't hear anything. No, I think there's some echo within the room.
Okay.
So I'm not sure, I, I'm, are you guys, I'm, uh, talking about the, um, the condition of providing a landscape around the enclosure?
Yes.
Cause, um, actually that was my question as well. Cause, um, how, how could we possibly provide a landscaping around it if the existing, um, doesn't have any green space or it's impervious within that area? So do we need to tear down the concrete on that area to provide the landscaping?
I guess the question was, are you tearing up some of the asphalt in order to put a new slab of concrete?
Right. Hmm, no, it's to be able to provide the landscaping that they're requiring around the, um, enclosure.
Right.
The bush.
Right. Um, are you tearing out any of the asphalt to put in a concrete pad? Or are you, are you just drilling holes into the asphalt to put the posts in for the fence?
That's correct. Yeah, that's right. We're not, we're just gonna put the posts, but we're not gonna tear up any of the asphalt.
Okay. Any other questions for Ms. Hernandez? All right. Did you have anything else you wanted to add, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes, I do. So, um, yeah, cause we're, we're actually proposing a, um, six-foot chain link of fence enclosure. And, um, you know, we would, we are requesting the approval of the planning commission, um, to allow that. But, um, one thing that, um, I just saw right now is that they are requiring the, um, the gate, enclosure gate to be wood. Um, we would like to know if we could, um, use the same material at chain link fence with, I, I mean, chain link with, um, a privacy slat as well for the enclosure, for, for the enclosure gate. Because, um, from our experience, the wood, um, usually is, um, less resistant than chain link fence to damage tension and weather. So we actually is trying to, um, stay away from wood on enclosure. So I wonder if we can use the, the same material for the enclosure gate as well, just to match everything.
Okay, thank you. Commission, thoughts, questions?
So the code indicates that Plan Commission can grant a special exception if the following four criteria are met. And special exception meaning that they can use chain link. And those, those criteria were that enclosure shall be in the rear yard, which this one is in the rear yard. Uh, it's also up against the building. Um, it also needs to have privacy slats, which it does. There needs to be landscaping in the form of shrubbery, um, to be a minimum of fifty percent of the enclosure height at planting around, uh, around it. And then the, the fourth one was that the gate shall be a hundred percent opaque, consisting of wood or synthetic materials rather than the chain link. Thinking that the, the gate would be facing a street, even in the rear yard, the gate typically is the, you know, accessible from a road or from a driveway, so that's why that standard was included. Now, as an exception, if you guys were to deem one of those four standards unnecessary, um, you could, you could probably waive it. I would caution you in doing so because future requests, um, you know, you may, you maybe have the same request waiving different requirements. And pretty soon we have now chain link fences that are, uh, screening, uh, properties on A Street and other commercial districts. But if you deem this being a unique circumstance due to the character of the lot or, uh, the location or whatever it may be, um, and you're looking to remove one of those four criteria, I would ask for clarification on the record, just noting, uh, what the uniqueness is.
I think the consistency is important here. We had an applicant very similar that had the chain link. Um, this isn't, um, alluding to any of the landscaping issues that you had brought up. Um, but I know that the chain link was something that we kind of held, um, to in the last applicant. So I would urge the commission to hold consistency with that one. Um, the other ones, I don't think we dealt with any landscaping issues, uh, previously that were in contention, um, with that one. So I think that one's kind of, the only potential uniqueness of this one is this one's all impervious surfaces, so.
So it, it typically has to screen fully the, the dumpster. So typically with, um, fencing, we, we, we see six, six feet. You can have an eight-foot high fence in commercial districts, but typically a six-foot fence will cover a, you know, four or five-foot dumpster. And the landscaping, as I said, requirement has to be fifty percent, um, at planting with the hope that over time the landscaping grows also to add aesthetics to the chain link fence.
Is there any, uh, exception for a tree in a pot? Does it have to be, do they have to dig a hole in the blacktop and plant that tree into the ground? Or is there any way of doing a above-ground type?
I, I think you, you'd have that flexibility, uh, to approve it as such.
Yep.
You said you've never dealt with plants and that before. Have you on, on fences like this?
I think the one that we were considering was the coffee shop that had, um, an applicant, uh, was interested in doing, um, alterations to number three here in the request. And they wanted to also do the chain link instead of, um, what is being proposed here. And we held them to that standard. So I just fear as a commission, if we're being inconsistent with that portion of things alone, I don't think there was any landscaping involved in that last one that was requested. I don't remember though.
Don't remember clearly on that for landscaping, but in, in terms of that one, it makes sense to have them do landscaping because it wasn't, um, it was towards the back, but they had, uh, green space in the back where they can plant. Where this is a unique situation where, yeah, I can see it us implementing that if they were redoing the lot. But because this is just, um, you know, they're, they're just gonna drill the posts, put it up, use the same cement. Now, to make them break up everything, add expense to what they're doing already, I, I just don't think, you know, um, planting trees or shrub would make sense. Um, but yes, we do, we should hold them to the same, uh, the same standard when they're doing the, um, the, the-
Fencing materials, yeah.
Fencing materials and all of that. It's just, the landscaping part just doesn't quite make sense to me.
Not for this application?
Not for this application. I can see it if they had green space or, um, it, that part is gravel, you know? Then it would make sense, but because it's, it's fully cemented, it doesn't make sense for them to tear it up just, just around that area for a shrub.
Any other comments or questions? If not, what are your wishes?
Could we make a motion for approval based on staff recommendations omitting number one and two?
I would second that.
You, yeah, you'd have the ability to do that, meaning condition?
Yeah, the condition one regarding the landscaping and two regarding the landscaping plan, um, that should be submitted.
Okay, but, um, maintaining that the gate be in opaque wood or synthetic, correct?
Yeah, and I think that would be consistent with previous applicants.
Yep. Sure.
Are you, were you able to hear what was, uh, the motion on the table was, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes, I did, I did hear, yeah. So I'm just saying that, um, omitting one and two, we're, we're fine with that. Thank you so much.
Okay. All right, so I have a motion by Ben and a second by Lee. Any other questions or comments?
Who was that second by, Mayor?
Lee Tao. And-
I just have one more.
Yep.
Just a question for Kyle. When we talk about the opaque and that and making it out of wood, could you use like, uh, that synthetic material, like you put composite, composite decks on, could you use that as?
That, that would suffice, yep. I think the thought was that it just have a little bit more decorative element than a chain, a silver chain link bar or a black chain link bar with the, you know, the crosshatch, um, that it's something a little bit nicer, right? Yep.
I get it.
All right. We'll move to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say nay. Ayes have it four to zero. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Hernandez.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Item three, two, four, dash, zero, zero, one, six, three, nine. BN BD Properties LLC, Request for a Site Plan Review to Perform Site Improvements at eighteen sixty, eighteen forty-eight, eighteen fifty-two, and nineteen hundred. A Street South, Parcel IDs three, four, one, one, seven, two, seven, three, four, one, one, seven, two, eight, three, four, one, one, seven, three, zero, and three, four, one, one, seven, two, nine. Kyle?
Thank you. So this request is for, uh, Site Plan Review to construct a new parking lot. Um, you can see from the photo that this is a little bit unique in that this is somewhat of a, of a condo, zero lot line development where there are four lots, um, that all share parking and, and, uh, there are multiple tenant suites within the building that all share parking. Uh, it's also a non-conforming building. It does not meet the setbacks along Eighth Street, uh, or along, uh, the north side yard. And I'll note that, um, recently the easternmost parking area was repaved. And when they did the, the repaving, they did not meet the required twenty-five percent landscape requirement. I bring that up because it'll come into play, uh, near the end of the discussion here. Um, so the request again is to pave the rear area, which is gravel. Uh, they're looking at constructing a fourteen, almost fifteen thousand square foot parking lot on the forty thousand square foot property. I mentioned that there's a front parking lot with eleven stalls. Uh, it does not meet the needs of the businesses. Henceforth, the reason to pave the back. The property is zone B two. Um, again, the, the parking would extend across those four parcel lines. Um, typically when that happens, the city requires some sort of shared access agreement, shared parking agreement. There's a specific section of the zoning code that speaks to that. Um, when we look at the, the uses within, there are, um, parking requirements. So currently they're not meeting the parking requirements on site. Um, but they are bringing it into more conformity with regards to offering additional parking on site. And Plan Commission can reduce a lower parking ratio. So that being said, we've, uh, we've performed a thorough review. They've, they've provided a, um, a site plan here. Uh, not the cleanest site plan, nonetheless, they do show required setbacks being met. Uh, how many spaces, um, size or dimensions of the spaces, um, where the ingress and egresses are located, which are to remain in their current locations, uh, which have concrete aprons already. Um, the one thing they are not meeting here is the eighty percent impervious surface ratio. Again, I mentioned that with the previous item that, uh, currently the code requires that lots or commercial properties on B two, uh, can only have eighty percent maximal impervious ratio. They're looking to exceed that with the parking lot improvements here. In doing so, the only way they can do that is with a zoning variance. So they've also requested that zoning variance and that'll go to a separate body to the city zoning board of appeals likely in early October. Because of the noticing requirements, the public hearing requirements, um, it's a little bit lengthier process to go to the zoning board of appeals to get the variance than it is for the site plan review. Because we're butting up against the winter months here, um, they want to get moving as quick as possible. And so we've got it on, uh, the agenda today for you guys to review. One of the conditions is then that they also get the variance request to exceed the impervious surface ratio here. They're looking at approximately ninety-six percent, um, uh, of an impervious surface ratio, obviously which is near a hundred percent of the site. So in our, in, uh, in our further review, right, ingress, egress is met, uh, existed with existing driveways off Seventh. You know, the use requires, as I mentioned, three hundred square feet, um, I'm sorry, one stall per three hundred square feet of gross floor area, requiring a total of forty-three parking stalls. Um, they're not able to meet that. I think they're requesting twenty-eight. Um, but they're, they're bringing the property more into conformity, uh, which is a good thing. And Plan Commission can reduce a lower parking ratio on the site as well. So we are recommending that, um, the parking lot be, uh, this, this site plan review be approved. Um, aside from the variance, that's a separate matter. Um, but you'll notice the, uh, the conditions here that we're placing upon them. Um, they've not, uh, uh, necessarily, again, noted, uh, the landscaping that's required from the front, uh, of the parking lot that was repaved, but because that was existing, they only need to provide twenty-five percent of that landscaping requirement. So I think they can rope that into, um, uh, the landscaping that's proposed in the rear lot here that you see. They call it their green space areas here in the rear, um, as well as, uh, the potential shrubs and stuff that they use. So with that being said, again, we're recommending, um, approval with several conditions noted in the, the staff report which pertain to, um, a permanent agreement, uh, for shared parking. Um, updated landscaping plan, uh, showing that that additional landscaping from the front repaving is incorporated, that they don't exceed the light requirements at the property line, they address stormwater and obtain city permits and so forth. And then the last one, obviously, or number eleven, is that they, uh, obtain that variance to exceed the impervious surface ratio through zoning board of appeals. If they do not get that exception or that, um, variance, um, either this likely would not go through or they would have to come back through, uh, Plan Commission with an adjusted plan showing that the parking lot is much smaller to meet that eighty percent requirement. Um, the only other thought I had is if they did that, if they, if they were denied the variance at zoning board of appeals, we could add a condition here that would allow staff to approve an updated plan that meets that requirement, if it meets all the other standards pertaining to parking lots. That's not included in this approval, but should, uh, the Plan Commission feel comfortable with staff approving that, we could add it as a condition. If that makes sense. With that, that's all I have. I know the applicant's here and can address questions as well. Um, or we'd be happy to answer any.
Questions, comments?
So I'll talk a little bit. I'm from, I'm Mike from Alpine Home Medical, so Ryan and I, Bobby coming up.
If you want us-
I'm pretty loud as it is, but.
If you want, if you want to repeat who you are and where you're from?
I'm Mike Roth, and I own Alpine Home Medical. And then, um, so Brian from the water quality store, the worst fall of all, and it's just, it's since saving off, like, well, we paved our back parking lot, it's all here about it, so. You know, it's, it's been a parking lot, it's been gravel, you have truck deliveries coming into that. Um, we park our cars back here, and we thought we would get this paid, this kind of off the start. So we're not changing this space, we're just trying to make it look a little nicer, being caged over being gravel. We have no problem adding some green space. We just can't go into, we got more green space than now, we can't get talks in there. You know, so that's our moving area and our parking areas. And also, you know, both of us are finding green space, it would look nice, but we can't do more green space than it's gonna take away from what we're doing.
Agreed. Thank you. Questions?
Thanks.
Comments? Seeing none, you want to come up? Go ahead. If you would say your name and where you're from again, please. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, what are your wishes?
So I'm looking through all the staff recommendations, one through eleven here. The ones that I guess are in discussion or open is obviously the landscaping plan. Kyle, could you detail four and the requirements that they have for the front landscape off of A Street that you're including in the recommendation?
Yeah, so the, again, the back parking lot is looked at as new construction, so they have to meet the full landscaping plans. When somebody does a repaving, meaning that there's existing landscaping and, or existing pavement in place, even if it's non-conforming, when they repave it or reconstruct it, they only have to meet twenty-five percent of the landscaping requirement. When they repave that, it was done after the fact, prior to city approval. So they still have to, as part of that, meet twenty-five percent of that repaving area. So they'd, they'd have to provide us a number of what that square footage is and if it required a hundred points within that square foot of repaved area, we would then take twenty-five percent of that requirement and say they need twenty-five landscape points. And we would allow them to place those points in the back area because...
Okay.
On multiple parcels and they'd have a shared access agreement. They just haven't identified that and addressed that on the plans they submitted now, which is why we're asking for an updated plan.
Okay. And so the plan that they submitted doesn't meet that yet?
Correct.
But that's something...
So they'd have to show where the additional, how much the additional landscaping from the front is, right? What the total square footage is? And then we'll calculate the twenty-five percent landscaping required and then they can incorporate those additional, you know, landscape points...
Sure.
In, to the back.
Do you or the applicant feel as though it's going to create a hardship to do that? To somehow create, I know we're trying to accommodate, you know what I mean, your business and make it common sense for you to be able to get deliveries and stuff and...
Right.
But...
Yeah, I guess we didn't look into that. You know, we're here today because we were going through a, an asphalt company. So what we've been getting is secondhand. They've been drawing these things and submitting them. So Brian and I thought we need to obviously get more involved into this and see. I don't know if you were familiar with that twenty-five percent of the front playing a part, but, but that's... Okay, yeah, so I mean, that's, we're just learning more about that. We're willing to do, you know, I guess like you said, you know, whatever we can do, but to still make that back lot usable, you know? You still figure you're taking a semi truck and trying to come in in a U shape to get in and out of Seventh Street, so... So yeah, I guess that's, you know, new as far as figuring into that plan, if there's room for another twenty-five percent and still make that usable. You know, that the alleyway that goes by me is used constantly by people cutting through A Street to Seventh Street that aren't our customers or anything, you know? So, so we, you know, don't want them driving through something either there, but, but yeah, we can definitely look at plan wise and if we need to resubmit something that way.
And then going forward, Kyle, if they can submit a plan and we approve all eleven of staff recommendations here, if they need a variance based on that, they could bring that back then if it's something outside of community development's ability to approve?
I think the question is if, if they wanted a variance from landscaping standards, yeah, they could include it as part of the variance from the impervious surface.
Okay.
And if they, if you guys approved these conditions and they got the variance, then yes, we could recognize that the variance would relate back to removing landscaping or whatever it would be.
Sure.
Yep.
Okay. Thanks.
And the only other issue is we have is the reduced, the parking lot, I mean, the, how many cars can park there? You had mentioned that.
So they, they do not meet the parking ratio currently.
Okay.
But these parking stalls would increase their current amount, getting closer to that parking requirement of forty-three stalls. So they're still under the required ratio, but they're getting closer to that, which is typically, you know, okay. Or you guys could, as part of this approval, recognize that they only need the, how many was it, the...
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight total? And you could acknowledge that that would be a reduced parking ratio of twenty-eight that they would need to meet moving forward.
Guys, get with that.
And so that's what condition twelve addresses, is that this, this approval includes a reduced parking ratio under the section that's referenced and then based on the site plan that shows the total number of twenty-eight.
Because I'll make a motion to approve as staff recommendations had the conditions as outlined in the agenda here.
Did you need clarification on any of the points, Kyle?
I think the only one would be if, if they get the variance for anything landscaping or the impervious surface, or if they, I'm sorry, if they didn't get the variance, would you permit staff to approve an updated site plan?
Yeah, I'll amend my motion to reflect that.
Okay. And I think condition ten would reflect that, that city staff shall have the authority to approve minor modifications. So basically, if they incorporated more green space and changed the site plan a little bit to meet the eighty percent ratio, we would have that. I just wanted to discuss it and have it as part of the minutes...
Yeah.
For clarity purposes.
So in no way this, like, we'll make sure that they can get their semi trucks in that parking lot turned around and backed into their loading docks, right? Like, we would never, we would always have to keep that in, in perspective when we're taking this into account, correct?
I mean, that would be on them to, to submit a plan that met our requirements, but also met their requirements. I think they've identified that they, it, it's challenging for them to meet their requirements, henceforth the reason for...
The variance.
For the variance.
Okay.
But plan commission doesn't have control over the ability to grant...
So there's a plan in place to help with that? Okay. Do you have everything you need for the motion?
I believe we do, yes. I don't think we have a second though.
I have a motion by Gudrow.
I'll second.
And a second by Maroots. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I move to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say nay. Eyes have it four to zero. Item four. Community Development Department requests to amend the zoning code, chapter eleven of the municipal code, to modify the secondary review requirements for use, for uses, discussion only. Kyle?
Thank you. So this, this has been quite a few years in the making and was before plan commission back in 2020. I think Lee, you might be the only one at that point that was on the commission. But it ultimately stems from the desire to simplify our review standards for certain uses, primarily for permitted uses. For example, if you're a business like Starbucks, permitted restaurant, coffee shop in the B two district, you've identified a property. Right now, staff will internally review your site plan and make sure you meet setbacks in landscaping and parking, just like we do for all the requests before us. The secondary review criteria means that it comes to plan commission, though, for that secondary review, for plan commission to review those standards and to make a recommendation ultimately on the item. So you have the staff review, staff will draft a memo, place it on the next plan commission agenda, and then plan commission has to act before city staff can issue any permits for that. I know there are some alders and community members and developers that find that process to be cumbersome, especially at, at a time like this where they want to, you know, maybe start construction in past years before the snow flies. And so back in 2020, I was asked to simplify that process to get projects moving. And the way I, I sought to do that was to call out certain uses and remove that secondary standard. So remove the architectural review, the site plan review, and the plan of operations review at the plan commission level, but to keep it at the staff level. And if it meets it at the staff level, then staff can go ahead and issue the permit. So again, the same standards will remain in the code, the same uses will remain, it would just be removing the secondary review requirements for certain items. Back in 2020, these were the items that I felt as though did not need secondary review and that I was suggesting would be, would be removed or clarified that, that don't need that plan commission review. I think there are some things that, some uses that, you know, you'd still want to have secondary review, you'd still want to get before, you know, plan commission. And so this doesn't include everything in our use table. But a lot of times when things come before this body, you know, it, it's a very quick review, it, there's not much that's questioned, you know, things are, you get professional plan sets or professional site plans and there's little discussion and it moves forward. But again, the developer's got to wait that thirty days or whatever it is until the next plan commission meeting. We then have to wait and withhold those permits. So I wanted to, wanted to get this in front of you this month so that you could provide some preliminary feedback on it. And then if the feedback is positive, we would bring forward an actual ordinance amendment in October or November that clearly identifies what needs to happen. The other thing is I wanted to note that, like our last request, there's some confusion still in regards to repaving, reconstruction, in that it, it also is problematic. You can see from the last request, with new, the new construction of a parking lot having to come before this body, but also with repaving and reconstruction, there's some confusion in, you know, the twenty-five percent landscaping requirement and having to meet other, you know, dimensional standards on a very, you know, think of A Street, there are some lots that they're built out fully, they don't meet setbacks, side yard, front yard, they've got stuff right up to the sidewalk or in the vision triangle. And having to meet these requirements becomes problematic. So I also wanted to, to try to address moving forward some of these new parking lot requirements and repaving or reconstruction parking lot requirements, or at least the process to review them. I think we can start with the process and then after we do the process, we could perhaps come back in the winter months when we're not issuing parking lot permits and actually look at overhauling the entirety of the parking lot and landscaping standards to simplify them. A lot of consultants, a lot of contractors get confused by our point standards, our landscape point requirements. It's easy to get lost and then spin your head trying to figure it out. Our buffer yard requirements are somewhat cumbersome. So I, I think after this, we would, we'd look to come back over the winter months and also look at landscaping and parking lot standards. So I wanted to bring that to your attention and get some preliminary feedback on whether or not you'd feel comfortable in removing some of those uses to allow staff review only, or if you want to keep that secondary review, that architectural review at the plan commission level moving forward.
Thank you. Questions, comments?
All right, I commend you, Kyle, and your staff for looking into these things to increase the efficiency and being a little bit more progressive with how we're looking at some of the zoning and, and variances and stuff like that. Some of it does need to come in front of a commission and go through this process where we have these discussions, you inform us of, you know, some of the, you know, legal requirements or how, how equality or consistency as we're holding it, but then other stuff. Yeah, as you kind of spoke to, it just, it doesn't make sense to come in front of the board because it's already been planned out and you've had these discussions with planners or architects, whatever it be, so... Yeah, it seems like you and your staff are always looking for these opportunities for us to streamline it for our community members, so I commend you for that. I, I very much like this type of research into it and discussions on how we can make it a little more streamlined.
Anyone else?
Oh, we're good.
Good. So I guess I, so we're just looking for conversation right now, so I'm...
Conversation, yes, because we weren't able to, you know, we missed the deadline to actually bring an ordinance amendment forward for action. So I thought, you know, let's, let's get some feedback first, because when we went through this in 2020, we did not get the feedbacks of staff invested the time with the assumption that there'd be, we'd be making changes and then plan commission have second guessed themselves and walked back their, this initiative and did not simplify the code and simplify the review criteria. So if the feedback is positive, we will continue to move forward with it. An ordinance amendment like this would require council action, so plan commission makes a recommendation to council on an ordinance amendment to the zoning code. And again, without any negative feedback, we will pursue that ordinance amendment next month or the following month.
So it looks like everybody's in support?
Yep.
Yep. I'm in support. Again, I think anything we can do to help things move faster and make communication clearer and less combative will be great. So thank you for your work on this. Any other comments? Seeing none, I move on to item five, adjournment. What are your wishes?
Make a motion. Second.
Got a motion by Lee, second by Ben. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say nay. Eyes have it four to zero. Thank you, everybody.